Yeah, but it's been awhile. Yeah, that's similar to me. They taste similar.
Okay, it's Tuesday, June 11th, 7:00 PM. It's time for our regular scheduled council meeting. Madam Clerk, you'll call the roll.
Charlie Davidson.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sosetta.
Here.
Charles Swinkie.
Here.
Terry Osburn.
Here.
Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Pastor Newton will lead tonight, and Councilmember Charlie Davidson will lead in our pledge. If you'll please stand.
Good evening. In the book of Philippians St. Paul, gives us some good instructions for community and life together, and he writes, "Be of the same mind, have the same love, be in full accord and of one mind; do nothing from selfish ambition or conceit, but in humility regard others as better than yourselves. Let each of us look not to our own interests, but to the interests of others." This is hard to do, so let us go to the Lord in prayer, as you are comfortable. Let us pray. Good and gracious God, look with favor upon your people and your servants gathered here this evening to do the governing and the business of this community. Grant them wisdom, harmony, and understanding as they make decisions. And we pray for all who work and serve the public, including police officers and city administrators and clerks, people who remove our trash from the curbs and put out fires in emergencies, people who run our library and repair our roads, people who cut the grass and clean our water, people who care for our parks and those who ensure we have electricity. We pray for teachers, social workers, small business owners, and faithful churches. We give thanks and pray for all who have followed the call to public service as their vocation, and we ask for your blessing upon this city, this county, and this community. I pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Okay, we'll start with approval of the agenda. Jim.
I move that we approve the agenda and approve the agenda with the addition of a recess after item seven, so that the Park City Land Bank can convene and discuss and consider a real estate purchase contract, and then reconvene back to the council meeting.
Hang on just a second before we go forward. Item eight, then?
Correct. Actually, Mayor, it'd be item number one for the Park City Land Bank.
Okay, so eight is the recess, and then Land Bank could be one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ben.
And would that be then item nine, as reconvening? Is that correct? As the council for...to approve?
I think we just reconvene. I don't think it needs to be an item number, because after that, there's no action items.
Okay. Sorry, I guess my question then was, is that so after that, us as the council doesn't need to take any action, based upon the Land Bank actions?
The Land Bank has approved in a contract, so when we come back into council now...
We don't have to do...okay, perfect, then I second. Sorry, I guess I should have said for discussion.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, motion by Jim, seconded by Ben, to approve the agenda with the addition of the Land Bank item. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion passes eight zero. Awards and presentations, we have none listed tonight. Staff reports, the city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The big news this week is naturally the groundbreaking ceremony this Friday for Champ Town Development. It will mark the beginning of the construction phase for the project that has been in the works for the past three years. The $994 million mixed-use development will feature several commercial projects, including the Kansas Aquarium, a rainforest-inspired butterfly conservatory, a multi-sport facility, a baseball softball complex, a new hotel, and 132,000-square-foot of retail space with several restaurants and a large retail anchor store. As far as project updates around the community, first, we have Big Street. The curbs were being poured today. Followed by that, the street installation will begin on Friday, and it's expected to be complete within the next week. Next is Briar Brook to the north. The streets have been installed, and the approach was also being poured today and will require a two-week cure period. Third, for the main lift station, the control panel that had been previously delayed has been received and should be installed and wrapped up soon. The city will need to perform a planned outage with Evergy for the contractor to make the final connections, and depending on the length of the outage, staff has made pre-arrangements to utilize the bypass pump if needed to ensure that the wastewater is kept at safe levels. Next is the 24-street rehab program, which primarily relates to the Broadway Mill and overlay. Plans are going through final modifications, and that should go out to bid next week. As far as the 24 sidewalk plan, which primarily relates to the extension along hydraulic, it is still in the design phase with, in conjunction with the waterline project along the same stretch, and staff indicates or anticipates a late summer bid letting. And then finally, for infant...well, two more, sure, sorry. Water meter replacement program, the majority of the residential meters have already been installed. Crews will now move on to the two-inch and larger commercial meters. Staff is working with the contractor to pick an install date for two of the three towers for the antennas, and it is anticipated that those will be completed in July, giving the majority of the customers access to the portal to where they'll be able to use the app online to monitor their water usage. And then finally, on the Jacksonville intersection, as you're aware, the reconstruction of the intersection was approved at the last meeting, and I was asked about the anticipated start date and the duration, and I indicated that it would start towards the end of June. But after talking with the contractor, staff feels it is best to start the week of July 8th, as not to have the intersection torn up and interfering with the city's Fourth of July parade and Fourth of July celebration. As I mentioned, the contract is for 50 days to complete the project, and again, once we have detailed phasing plan, we will publish that on the website, on our Facebook, as well as provide a copy to all the council members, as Councilmember Davidson had requested at the last meeting. As far as upcoming events, this Saturday, June 15th, there are three different events scheduled. The first is, of course, naturally, the fishing derby at 9:00 at Chisenpoint Pond. The second is the Dog Days of Summer at the newly renovated Community Building. It will be from 1:00 to 5:00, and will feature several booths related to pet care, and the first 100 pets can get their...can be microchipped for free. And then last, the event in the evening will be Movies in the Park, featuring the movie At Dog's Purpose. Sunset is at 8:53, so the movie should start somewhere right around 9:15. Then in three weeks, it will be the city's Fourth of July Salute to Freedom. Daytime activities include music and entertainment, games, food trucks, a magician, face painting, and water activities. There are sign-up forms on the city's website and Facebook pages for the parade, the car show, the pageant, the pet show, and the pickleball tournament. And the evening will feature music from the Lou Brown Band, and will conclude with the fireworks spectacular that is sponsored by Crosswinds Casino. That's what it had me.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Charlie.
I move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Thank you, Charlie. Brandy?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Charlie, seconded by Brandy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight zero. On to new business. Discuss and consider approval of an agreement with Viking Industrial Painting for water tower maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Water tower maintenance is an important component to extending the lifespan of our towers and related equipment. It can also reduce the number of service disruptions, help prevent the likelihood of water quality violations or fines, and ensure that we're able to store enough water to cover peak demand. The city relies on both the Wendell Tower and the 85th Street Tower to provide safe drinking water as well as fire flow. Upon a visual inspection of the Wendell Tower, staff noticed issues of concern and reached out to Viking Industrial Painting for a more in-depth inspection of both towers. Viking found several areas of concern, which Rick will be discussing during his presentation. Staff is proposing to enter into a contract with Viking to establish a plan to remedy the immediate issues and maintain the towers in future years. Three funding options have been provided, with the main difference being the amount of money committed in year one, which in turn affects the financial commitment in year two and beyond. Additionally, each of the three options for each tower have a point in which ongoing maintenance cost remains fixed, converting to a prepayment for improvements. This is an unbudgeted item. Staff is recommending approval of option number two, and authorizing the mayor to execute a maintenance contract with Viking Industrial Painting. And I will have Rick come up now and go through his slideshow presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for letting me be here, and I realize your time is very, very valuable, and it's short, especially in the meeting, so I'll try and get through this as quickly as I can. But just understand that it's all important, and if there's something that I'm going too fast through, or something along those lines, just feel free to stop me, and we can discuss that item. So, the agenda for this would be a quick overview of who Viking is. Sometimes we go by VIP tank also. We'll go through the tank conditions, and then we'll talk about cost and maintenance program and what that is, and then just answer any questions you have. Viking is based in Omaha. There are several companies within Viking, and a lot of...one of the reasons for that is just for...to make...to give you more diversification into other areas. The main one I would probably point out is, well, there's kind of another one that's not really even on there, and that is our...we have VIP engineering, which is a civil engineering arm of our company also, which is basically somebody that's licensed in the state to do a lot of the work...the type of work we do. Mongan Painting is another one that's done a lot of work around this area, and they primarily work in the wastewater industry. Company overview. Viking's been in the water tank maintenance market since 2001. We have people that are on AWWA and on committees for AWWA. Like I said, we all have our in-house engineering. We have NACE-certified inspectors, which is kind of a big deal in the coatings world. It's the highest degree of inspection that you can have, accredited one. We have in-house inspection, repair crews, and we have 10 of our own crews that we use, approximately. That gives or takes a few. And we're also very concerned about being driven by our company core values. In 2023, this is always amazing to me, Viking used 54,000 gallons of paint. That's quite a bit. We did...we worked on 375 tanks and worked in 26 states. I care about what happens in Kansas, and I do jobs that cost $1,000 and jobs that cost $1 million. They're all important to us and how we work on them. My name's Rick Penner. I've been in the...I was in the coating industry for about 30 years prior to getting into this in 2017. I am a NACE...actually, I think I was one of the first ones in Kansas that was a NACE-certified coatings inspector. So, I've been around for awhile. I've been a member of Kansas Rural Water Association for more than 25 years. I worked together with another guy, John Reimer, and he isn't here tonight. He's at another meeting. But John brings a lot of experience through his...he worked for various construction companies in estimating and project management and so forth, so it's very valuable. And Brandon is our sales manager. He's based in Omaha. John and I are based in Heston. The ownership of our company is Rory Sudbeck and John Snodgrass. I think together between the two of them, there's probably over 40 years of experience in the water tank industry. And Kurt is our chief operating officer and also our civil engineer. All the things that we offer, we've kind of talked about a little bit already. We do tank inspection and condition assessments. Maybe we have maintenance programs. We do interior, exterior coatings, anything that has to do with the water tower. We don't build new ones, but we will put new rafters in. We'll do any type of major repair to a tank. New roofs on tanks occasionally we do also. So, VIP engineering, that's our licensed civil engineering. Kind of already briefly touched on that, so...our core values. Now, this is an important thing. I mean, it really is to us, because it's how...it's how we try to operate. We really want to be customer-focused by providing service and put the customers first. We want to get...we want to achieve excellence through swift and high attention to detail. We want to continuously improve, and believe me, we talk...I talked with Kurt, our COO, this morning about that. That's a constant struggle, right? I mean, everybody has that. But it's something that we're really committed to, and have a can-do attitude, believe that we can do what we say we're going to do. We want to be proactive. We promote that to our customers and to the cities, and we want to have that also. And then we want to act with integrity, to uphold the standards, and the thing that's said a lot is do the right thing always. One thing we do for that is, and I think this is important, it's probably not that big a deal to people, that we have customer satisfaction surveys, but it means a lot. We discover a lot of things, and we discover a lot of things that we can improve on, but it's an important step that we take to try and be a better company. So, the process, just like Gina said, we typically go out and do a tank assessment, like I did. Actually, I've done it here a couple of times. I first climbed the tanks and those...well, at the time, I climbed all three tanks in 2020, and with job changes and different people, things kind of got stalled at that point. Things changed, and other things obviously became a priority. But at that point, there was work that needed to be done on the tanks, for sure. So, anyway, that's when I started on this. But the tank assessment is basically, we're doing an assessment of the five components of a tank, all the structural things, the safety things, the sanitary things, the coatings, and the security things. That's what we look at, and then we try and prioritize things to make the most sense for the tank. After that, we review our results with the key city officials. We have a discussion on the needs, the timeline, procurement options. There's different ways to do all of this. And we make a collaborative decision, make, you know, with the official's input. It's a better way to do it. And then we build a plan to try and fit what the customer needs. So, condition report. I'll just briefly go through some of this. This is the Wendell Street tank. It's a 500,000-gallon petosphere is the type of tank it is. The picture on the left is kind...I'm trying to show what the coatings look like on the outside of the tank, and you see how rough it is. I don't know, there's...somebody's tried sandblasting in places and not in other places. The coating is very thick. It's becoming chalked and faded. The more it chocks and fades, the more the dirt and grime sticks to the bottom of the tank. It becomes more porous, so stuff can grab a hold of it easier. The more gloss you have, and with different types of products, it will help minimize the amount of mold and mildew that's on the bottom of the tank. One thing, a standard thing that is done to check adhesion of the existing coatings, because we're trying to evaluate if the tank needs to be blasted or whether we can overcoat it. One obviously costs a lot less than the other, and we're trying to decide what the best way to do that is. And it's a...it doesn't seem like a very scientific test, but it's simply an X-scribe, where you cut an X into the tank and see what the condition of the coating is. And on this tank, it's brittle, which it comes off all the way down to the substrate. A lot of times, you can cut an X into it, and you can't take it off with a chisel. This one comes off pretty easily, and one of the reasons why is because the other picture on the right is showing how thick the coating is. It's over...it's 20 to 30 mils throughout the tank, and that's getting pretty high in terms of adhesion. It's just going to continually get worse. I always tell people, it's like my house that was built in 1930. The more paint I put on it, the more it wants to peel. Your swimming pools are probably the same way. I run into that a lot. I've worked on a lot of pools, and it works on water towers, too. So, our recommendation is to remove all of the coatings and start over, which would require a containment system, because number one, there's a lead-based primer on the outside of the tank, so that has to be contained and disposed of properly. So, this is just kind of giving an example of a tank like yours, where we weld arms on the top of the tank and put a bonnet and a curtain system on it to contain the tank. And then the hazardous waste is...there's a method for doing it that you can easily dispose of it. The interior dry area of the tank, so to get into the tank...to get into the bowl of the tank, you climb up all the way through the center of it, all the way up through the center of the bowl. The picture on the left, we call that the dry riser, is the area that's climbing up through the bowl of the tank. And as you can see, the coatings are failing. Somebody, I think, tried to use a spray can to touch it up. And the picture on the right, it's how the last contractor, whoever worked there last, left the condition of the tank. That's one of the landings. It's got land...you'll have a section of ladder, a landing, and they just left all their trash. I'm not going to tell you what else is up there, but they had a lot of stuff that it was just in poor condition, where they didn't do a very good job. Here's just more pictures of it. The picture on the center is interesting to me, because I'm a paint guy. The gray-looking...gray-green coating that you're seeing on there, that is actually a zinc primer, which is a galvanic-type primer that only works when it's on steel. And somebody tried to paint it over the top of the existing coating, and it just looks terrible. It's dark. It's like a dungeon and kind of a mess. The picture on the right is what it should look like. Excuse me, I'll get a drink. The interior wet area of the tank, these are just some pictures of it, the cables, the wires, and the connectors that you see, that's an old cathodic protection system. That was a very common thing 30 years ago. They're almost all abandoned now. They really don't work that well, and with the advent of new coatings that we have and new technologies, it really renders them useless. They don't need to be there. They would be removed on any renovation. The full way to renovate the...oh, let's go to the next picture. So, here are some other pictures of the interior of the tank, especially the ladder on the interior is completely rusted. You wouldn't want to set foot on it. The picture in the middle is a picture of the zinc primer I was describing earlier, where you would remove everything that's on the inside of the tank and prepare it to a certain standard, and then apply a zinc primer, stripe all the welds, all the corners, all those areas, and on the right, you end up with the finished product that looks like that. Here's just some more pictures for you on the condition. On the left is the fill pipe. There's a lot of areas where the insulation is falling off, and here again, we see how dirty it is in there. The center picture is the interior wet ladder, which is in rough shape, and that picture on the right is the hatch leading into the tank from the roof, and you can't really see it, but there are spots of light through it. It's completely rusted through. It needs to be replaced. Those...that's just kind of an overview of that tank. I've got a lot more detail and a lot more pictures, but I think that kind of gives you the idea. The 85th Street tank is newer, and it's in a lot better condition. It's a composite-style tank. My company, we do a lot of these. We work for...there's about three companies across the United States that build these types of tanks, and we work for all three of them. We don't do all of their work, but we do a lot of them. The most recent ones we've done, I think, were in Tonganoxie and Lawrence and Topeka. So, we've done quite a few of these types of tanks. As far as the coatings go, the exterior coating is in pretty good shape. It's starting to chalk and fade a little bit, and it's looking a little bit dirty, but it's really not too bad. It's in good condition to be able to overcoat. There's no reason to blast it off at the time that the exterior needs to be painted, and that's what you want to do, is so you don't have to have that extra expense. The picture on the right is the interior. You can see the roof rafters and the sidewall. That's all...the coatings there look pretty good. This is where the problem lies. There is a galvanized rail that goes all around the center of the tank. That's on the inside center of the tank, and you can see the high degree of corrosion that's going on there. There's a dissimilar metal thing that's going on there, causing premature corrosion, and I think there must have been some improper surface preparation or something that caused it to be this severe. We came up with a couple of different ideas for logos. The one on the left is simply exactly what you have, but with a darker outline, like is on some of your signage. The one on the right is utilizing... The one on the right is utilizing the Park City flag, which looks kind of, it looks pretty unique. That's just the way it looks on that tank. I could put together a rendering on your other tank, too, if need be. So, the work breakdown. Wendell Street, exterior full renovation with lead containment. Logo, putting the logo back as it is. Interior dry renovation, which would be blasting the dry area and redoing the whole thing. Interior wet renovation, same thing, blasting it off, redoing the whole thing. And the miscellaneous repairs would be to replace the manway on the roof, I guess I'd call it the hatch. Replace the interior wet ladder and install new cable climbs, safety climbs on the other ladders. And repair the frost jacket on the fill pipe and the insulation. And seal all the CP ports, which were the cathodic protection ports where those things were hanging. There's actually holes up on top of the roof, and oftentimes, I see where those come off and can let critters, let birds or bugs or that type of thing into your tank. The 85th Street tank, it's not ready to paint right now, but the plan would be to paint the exterior, put the logo back on as it is, and renovate the interior wet by blasting, and do the interior steel repairs. Do those first. As far as the maintenance program, this is the part that we've talked about together with Gina and Sean. The maintenance program basically says, for a fee, we do, we take care of the tank by cleaning it out, inspecting it. Basically, we take over the maintenance of the tank. It becomes our responsibility. And I don't know that I need to say this here, but a lot of places, I mean, it happens sometimes where people spray graffiti on your tank, or sometimes they shoot a hole in your tank. And those types of things would all be covered under the maintenance program. One of my best examples is at a small town, but they had a drain valve that broke, and the entire tank drained, and he was in quite a panic. And we had somebody there by the next day. There would have been a very costly repair to get somebody there on an emergency basis like that. And that was part of the maintenance program. We fix it. So, it's, a lot of it is peace of mind, and it's planning for the future. It's being proactive and staying ahead of the problems. It's maintenance. It's not acting reactively. So, within the maintenance program, Viking is responsible for it. And the fees that you pay are limited to 5% annual inflation. Before all this rampant inflation started, we were pretty much standardized at 3.3%. We've had to go up a little more than that, and hopefully, as things go down, we'll go down a little more than we are now. It includes all your routine inspections and cleanouts. It includes all your future paint jobs. It keeps the tank up to date and in compliance with KDHE and AWWA. And it's a good way for administration in the city to plan and to budget for. That's a big part of it. These agreements are one-year agreements that self-renew, so you're always in control of it. And that's my presentation. I mean, if you have any questions, I think you have some pricing in front of you, and with some different options. And I think the way I would describe it is, they're really not all that different from each other in terms of the work schedule. And I think the best way, well, let's just talk about option two, which is what the city was recommending. The first thing that needs to be done is to take care of the repairs on the 85th Street tank. That's an issue that needs to be taken care of. So, that would be done in year one. And then in year two, which would be 2025, would be the complete renovation of the Wendell Street tank. And what we're trying to do here is kind of spread the cost out, where sometimes we're, actually, most of the time, more than not, we're kind of upside down on the money side of it, so that gives you a little security, that gives you some security also. But we tried to spread that out over three years. We tried to spread out the cost of the renovate, or the repairs to do on the 85th Street tower over three years. So, that's what you're looking at in terms of the total. And then we would wait, we would just start on the maintenance program then. Well, they would all be covered under it from the very start for any emergencies and that type of thing, and cleanouts and inspections. But you would start paying the fees, just the fees, without the upfront costs in year four on the Wendell Street tower. And then, if you look all the way into year five, that's where we've got scheduled to do. We're planning, that would be our planning of doing the 85th Street tank, and doing the interior and overcoating the exterior. There's, basically, the way these look is, it's just kind of moving the money around a little bit, trying to find the best combination that makes the most sense, bang for the buck. Essentially, you don't start paying the fees until the coatings are done, because that's the largest dollar amount part of it. Is that clear?
I think so. I have a few lights lit up, a couple of questions I wanted to ask you.
Sure.
In advance, and some of this frustrates me in seeing the condition of some of these towers, because I was here when both of these towers were painted the last time. And I can actually recall the one on Wendell, that we had them come back and do warranty work of it, because it was not a quality job then. So, something that comes to my mind, and I guess I'll back up a little bit. I'm trying to remember the year that the tower on 135 and 85th was built, but I think it was between '09 and '13?
I think, I think it was '09.
'09. So, I guess, a brand-new tower, that just frustrates me, seeing the condition of some of that structure inside of it. What, on the surfaces and the coatings that you're doing, what is, this may be the million-dollar question for any painter, but lifespan.
Oh.
When are we looking, when are we gonna paint this again?
I've never been asked that question. We typically plan on doing it somewhere between 13 and 15 years. Everybody's idea when something needs to be done is different. And when a tank is new, that initial coating system, it's a more controlled condition on a lot of parts of it. And I was around when that was being built and dealt with the fabricator on that. And I was around when the other tank was being done, too. And I know, I distinctly remember that project being done at that time also. I would say, on an overcoat situation, it would be around that.
Great.
We typically figure up to 15 years.
And then, another question I had is, like, when you guys are doing it, is it all your folks doing the work, or do you sub it out?
We do both. The only way to regular, you can imagine, if we have a month where it rains 20 days, you can imagine what that does to our schedule, when you have people working, you know, 120 feet up in the air. So, we do utilize subcontractors to fill in the gaps. We try to vet them very carefully, and we have a very, I would call it strict reporting system that everybody has to do, all of our crews do, including the subs, where they're required to, they're required to report the batch dates of paint, the environmental conditions of that day that they're working, and provide pictures of what they've done, and that type of thing, so that we can constantly monitor what's going on. Because our project managers, when we're doing that many, I mean, some of our jobs only last a few days, and some of them last six weeks. So, they're not visiting all the job sites. We're trying to manage by keeping an eye on them, which is something unique that I think that we do, that others don't.
There's not necessarily an inspector on site watching work get done.
We do have inspectors that go around to keep an eye on things.
And they're internal employees?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Jim?
And we have safety people doing the same thing.
Great.
I appreciate the thorough report, and glad to be made aware of the situation of these. So, my question maybe is a little bit more around staff and just the process. So, kind of like the idea of this option two you're talking about, because this allows us to budget for something that's not budgeted for. Like the flag idea. Biggest question, putting the new flag on them. Biggest question I have is, nothing against your credibility and your company, but this is a big project. What about competing bids, and what other companies do this? You know, is this a fair price? I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think I can answer that.
Okay.
To a degree. This is, the maintenance program, part of this, is really almost more of a service, is anything. It's about a relationship thing. It's not about a low bid. So, that's a big part of trying to find the right people to partner with to try and come up with the solutions for the tank, to try and do the right things for the tank. You know, it's, it's a different way, it's a different type of approach than the standard, hire an engineer and put it out for bid. But it's just a different way of doing it. As far as the pricing goes, I price it the same either way. So, a lot of our work that we get is not necessarily low-bid work either. And for those that have, I was involved in the bid world for a long time, and I know what you get a lot of times. So, I guess that's really the only way I can answer that, as far as the competitive side of it.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Brandy?
Okay, I have several, so bear with me.
Sure.
Okay, so the first one is, in some of the options, like option one, it has full renovation on Wendell Street, and then interior coating and steel, and then, but option two, first year is visual inspection, then full renovation. What is a visual inspection versus an ongoing maintenance?
Oh, it's, it's really the same thing. It's just kind of describing what you're doing. The reason it says ongoing maintenance is because wherever that starts, that's where just the fees start. That's where the upfront renovation has already been done and paid for. So, that's just indicating that it's starting the maintenance, standard maintenance program. Everywhere, the tanks are all going to get climbed and inspected once a year. And it is important to do, because you would be surprised how many tanks I go to, and there's a lid open or something. Plus, if we're responsible for the tank, we want to know about it so that we can fix it. So, and, you know, we don't do everything right either all the time, but we want to make sure that we take care of the problem. So, that's why we're doing the inspections every year. I don't know that I really answered your question, but...
You kind, I get it. Okay, and so when you do these, how long does it take to do a renovation on these tanks? And how long is that tank essentially shut down? Or, because I'm assuming it's gonna be drained and shut down, and you're gonna do the work. So, how long is that?
That's, that's a good question, and a lot of that depends on the conditions. When you put that tarp up on a Kansas wind day, that's, you can't have, you can't have the sides of the tarp down on too windy of a day. I would estimate that a job like this on the Wendell Street tank would probably take, you know, 45 days, something like that. And the tank is out of service for 45 days. Well, the tank is itself, and then the city has ways of going around the tank to maintain pressure. And it's a stressful thing for the city during that time, obviously. I mean, they rely on the tank. But I tell them, I always say, I'm doing you a favor. Pull the Band-Aid off, you're gonna take better care of the tank if you're not afraid to take it offline, right? It's just the fact. I think the other tank, it is, it's got more square footage. I think it would probably be in that 30 to, a little bit less probably, maybe the 30-day range, something like that.
And in that 30-day range, is that the full renovation range? Or is the interior coating still repair range?
The repairs, I think, would probably take less than a week.
And so, when you're doing those repairs, it's gonna be down as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, in the pictures, it looks like Wendell Street visually is worse than 85th, but the recommendation is to do the interior and steal on 85th first, and do then the full renovation of Wendell next year.
Right. And some of that had to do with budgeting. That had to do with me moving numbers around to try and make the most sense, and to provide the most bang for the buck, essentially. And some of that has to do with the 85th Street, that problem that's up there, that could potentially end up being a structural issue. So, we just felt like that was the number-one thing to take care of. And we want to do work, we want to do some, and one of the reasons we did the work, we spread the cost of that for three years on the Wendell Street tank. And putting it in the middle makes the most sense. Otherwise, if we put it in year one and gave three years to pay for it, then the company is so far upside down on it that they can't, it's hard to make up for that, and you have to charge for that. That's what I was trying to avoid, trying to even it all out so that that wouldn't happen.
Okay, and then I think this is my final question. So, I agree that we've done so much here to try to rebrand the city with our flag and all that. So, I like the option to put the flags on both the tanks. So, when would that occur? Would that occur when the full renovation happens, or would that happen prior to this? Like, for example, the 85th Street, would that happen when you did the interior coating? Or does that wait and happen in 2028, when the full renovation happens?
The plan would be to do it in 2028. If you wanted to do it sooner, we could make arrangements to do that. But yes, it's, the plan is to do all the interior and the exterior coatings in 2028 at this point. That can be adjusted. And maybe, and what we do a lot of times is, we just don't, sometimes we don't do all the work at the same time. We're trying to spread it out to spread the cost of it. So, one remedy for that would be, if you wanted to do that one sooner on the exterior, we could tie the exterior in with the interior repairs, but, and then still hold off on doing the interior and doing that later. The tank would be down for a shorter period of time that way, too.
Okay.
But that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, so, on the fees, the 5% annual inflation, is that compounded yearly?
Yeah, so, the way it works is, we would, so like on this chart, you can see that on the middle option, in year four, it's 19, 758, and that it's that way for three years. And then, the next three years, it would be raised by, if it was 3% per year, it'd be 12%. You see what I'm saying? So, it's just based off of that number.
So, the, okay, so, if I understand correctly, so in year two, for instance, the total combined is 217, 874. You're saying that that is guaranteed until the end of this contract, and then we would see the inflation rate kick in at the next time? Or is, are you telling us that up to 5%? So, if it was 5%, year two would be $228,767.
No, that's locked in.
Okay, so the...
Those prices are locked in.
Those seven-year fees are locked in?
Yes.
It would be after that year, any amount of interest that's accumulated on an annual basis would be tacked on?
Well, it would basically be like at the end of a three-year period. So, where it says 19, 758, then those fees could possibly go up, could go up, up to 5% per year after that. But we, but we do it for three years at a time.
Okay, so up to a 15% increase for the next...
For the next three, for the next three years.
Okay. That answers my question as far as this one, because if it was during this time, option one would make much more sense, if you were compounding this. But, okay, that was my, that was my question, thank you.
Charlie?
Just a little further on Jim's question, Sean, why did we not ask for bids on this, or did we?
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I don't want your spot, but I'll take it for a second.
Sure.
We did not, because it's more of a service-related contract. You really have to get out to those further-out years to see that our annual cost would be $19,000, and that's something that wouldn't have necessarily prompted the procurement process. Now, in order to get to that, we have to do the repainting, the renovation. That is not something that we bid out. If council would prefer that, we could bid that out. I'm not sure what that does to our relationship with Viking and their ongoing maintenance obligations or commitments.
Thank you. George?
I just had a quick question. How long, do you know how long it's been since somebody's actually been working on those water tanks? And you're not just coming along, was there a contract, and somebody wasn't renewed, or?
No, it was through the bid process. This is what I remember on Wendell Street, anyway. It went through a bid process, and they hired the lowest bid, and that was back around, it was, well, it was the same time that the other tank was done. It had to be, because it was painted the same way, right, on the exterior?
So, it's been several years?
Yeah, it's been since 2009-ish, '10, right around there.
So, that represents the way it's gone downhill? So that represents the, the way it's gone downhill inside because nobody's been in there. Now, on the water tower, I'm pretty ignorant on this. Is the water tower, does it fill up with water? Or is, or how's that work since you were...
Yeah, that, that section you saw with the, with the insulation that was coming off, that's the fill pipe. That's the pipe that goes all the way up into the tank that fills it. And then the tank obviously provides pressure to the town. That's why it's up in the air, for, for gravity.
Okay, thank you.
And one other thing I'll point out about the maintenance program is, honestly, it's a perpetual warranty. It's a warranty that if something goes wrong, like if the tank needs to be painted in five years, we do, we, we have to redo it. I mean, we're obligated to that. And that's the peace of mind part of it that you can't really put a number on, I guess. That's a part that's important. It, it's, it's a long-term way of looking at things. It's a pro, it's not, it's not doing things on a run-to-fail approach, which is so often what happens. It's, it's a proactive maintenance-type mindset is what is the concept of it.
Thank you. Great.
Sir, if I may, back to your question, when Viking first approached us, I think it was towards the end of 2019 into 2020, Public Works Director had his change in, in positions and everything like that. They came back the following year, different Public Works Director. There were recommendations to make some immediate repairs. That was brought to council, and those repairs were made. That was very small and minor. It was, it wasn't along the lines of entering into a long-term maintenance program. So this is the third time they've come back, and now I've worked with Gina. But yes, there were minor repairs made to it with some of the, the most egregious deficiencies at the time, and that was only two and a half, three years ago, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I should have pointed that out. There were. Mainly vents were the issues at that point that got replaced.
Charlie?
No, I appreciate the conversation tonight, and I'm glad we've been notified on these, and I like how we can budget things in. So I'm going to make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a maintenance contract with Viking Industrial Painting.
Thank you. George Glover?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Brandy, did you have something else?
Is your motion going to include as-is or with the logo?
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's do, well, I, I guess I should change that to say option two, approve it with option two with the option of the flag logo design.
Is the second good with that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Ben, did you have something additional?
I do, actually, on there, sorry. So just to understand, because the two questions have come up concerning procurement and our policy for bidding and everything there on that. Have we actually set that policy as to what it should be whenever we're going, needing to go up for bids on projects like this? Do we actually have a bidding process in place right now? I know Gina mentioned that, you know, at the end, one water tower is 19,000. So that wouldn't generate necessarily something, but the total cost is still 1.2 as a contract for seven years. Is there a process we have that requires bidding?
Under the procurement policy, there are guidelines of various different construction projects that we would relate to. It is the, it is guidelines that council can follow and sit there and say, no, we believe that this to be single-source with the, the few number of companies within the area that actually provide this type of contracted service. It's up to the, the council as to how they would want to proceed with that.
Okay. I, I will say for myself, I, if we know that there's other companies available that do this, I think we should always at least check when we're taking 1.2 million on there. For that reason, I will be voting against the contract.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. I have one other question before we vote on this. Lighting, is there any possibility or chances of getting any kind of lighting on these towers? And I say that as in our logos on it, and the one up on 85th Street is right on Interstate 135. And is there any possibility of doing that? And obviously, we don't need to decide it tonight, what we're going to put, but I'm just asking.
Yes, sir. There, there are possibilities. There's a myriad of different options when it comes to lighting, whether it's LED, whether it's something that could be changed. Is it lit from below or is it actually mounted to the tower? Some towers have it actually at the top and the bottom of the tower. Some have just poles adjacent to the tower that shine up. We can definitely research and bring back several different options for council to consider. Obviously, it's not part of the maintenance contract for the lighting. But yes, it, it is possible, sir.
See, it was a good time to speak about it. And my question would be, I also wonder if CNT would be a good partner in something like that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. Seeing no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 7-1 with Ben voting nay. And that motion was by Jim Schroeder, correct? Or, I'm sorry, Charlie Davidson? Charlie and seconded by George. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item four, discuss and consider resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with such findings, thus being sanitary sewer in Park Center. Sean?
Yes, sir. Council approved Resolution 1189, 2024, back on March 12th, proposed improvement to the city's sanitary sewer system. On June 6th, a bid opening was held where the lowest bidder was $546,310.06 below the engineer's estimate for the overall project, which includes paving, stormwater drainage, water line, and sanitary sewer. But it had exceeded the approved amount for the sanitary sewer petition by $152,135.82, requiring a repetition. The attached updated petition was signed by the owner of the records of more than one-half of the area for the assessment, allowing for such improvements to be made without notice and hearing as required by KSA 12-6A01. The outlined improvements, the improvement district, the method of assessment, the apportionment, all remain the same as the original petition. The updated estimate or probable cost of the proposed improvements was increased to $994,000. There is no fiscal impact, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Yeah, I'd go ahead and make a motion here that we approve the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Andale Construction, the amount not to exceed...
Sir?
Oh, a wrong one, sorry. I thought it was going to be simpler. I'm just going to approve, make a motion to approve Resolution 1212-2004, 2024. Sorry, I'm having all sorts of problems. Not my last vote, but other problems.
Charlie?
I will second.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes A0. Move to item five, discuss and consider approval of a bid from Andale Construction for paving, stormwater drainage, water line, and sanitary sewer for Park Center. Sean?
Yes, sir. The bid opening was conducted on June 6th for Park Center for paving, stormwater drainage, water line, and sanitary sewer. A total of three companies submitted bids. Andale Construction submitted the lowest bid of $6,895,800, or excuse me, $689.94, excuse me, which was well below the engineer's estimate for the overall project. But their bid for sanitary sewer, as I explained, exceeded the petition approved by the council on March 12th, requiring the repetition. That was the previous agenda item. Attached are copies of the bid tabulation and the Andale Construction contract. It is authorized, funded via temporary financing, followed by long-term general obligation bonds, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Sean. Ben?
Can I pick up where I left off? To move, I would make a motion to approve the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Andale Construction in the amount not to exceed $6,895,689.94 to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
Thank you, Ben. Charlie?
Second.
Seeing no further discussion. Motion by Ben, seconded by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 8-0. We're on to item six, zoning case 2024-01, discuss and consider approval of a proposed change of zoning district classification from the R2 Single Family Residential District to the GC, General Commercial District, located south of 93rd Street North and east of Broadway Avenue. Russ?
Mayor, council members, Russ AV, zoning administrator. This is a, the first zoning request of the year on 124 acres for industrial and commercial development. The property sits just north of Saddle Brook and Briar Brook Edition, which the council approved last summer and was platted and is being currently developed into a single-family and duplexed project. This project, in addition to the industrial and commercial portions of the property, which is typically aligned along the interstate highway, there is also the proposal, although we haven't seen the plat filed yet, for Briar Brook Second Edition. So roughly 45% of the application area for general commercial will be developed or proposed for residential development. You will notice in, in the staff comments, which I'll get to here in a second, that we account for that land use discrepancy. We had a recommendation from the Planning Commission after a fairly lengthy discussion, unanimous decision, seven to zero, to accept or recommend approval of the zone change per staff comments. There was approximately 14 to 15 people in attendance, eight of whom spoke in opposition to the request. We did file, we did see filed about 11 protest petitions which count against the way in which you, as the city council, will vote on this matter. 20% or more of the land required to be notified, held in protest, requires a three-quarter supermajority vote, which we have. So that'll require, I believe, seven members of the council to vote in the affirmative to approve the zone change. Anything less than that would be a failure to approve, and, and the outcome would be a denial of the zone change. Staff recommended five conditions, the first being, the property shall be platted prior to the publishing or enacting of the zoning ordinance. I put this in the staff comments in order to ensure that what is being proposed as Briar Brook Second Edition does not get the general commercial zoning. I think it's very cumbersome and, and pretty straightforward as to why we wouldn't want to have residential properties confused with their base zoning district. So once these properties, once this property is platted, we expect a residential plat and an industrial plat. Then we will rewrite the ordinance to zone general commercial, only that which will be in the industrial-commercial portion of the site. So we will eliminate Briar Brook Second Edition from the zoning legal description. Another important factor in talking about the compatibility issues that were raised during the Planning Commission meeting is that this project and all subsequent projects for commercial and industrial will have to conform with our non-residential design guidelines, which kind of foresaw this type of development and the, as a, and, and the need for a better regulatory mechanism by which we can hopefully offset and mitigate any negative impacts between conflicting land uses. Everything else here is fairly straightforward. We have a lighting provision that we've used in similar industrial developments when in close proximity to residential. And again, this site, as in a lot of greenfield sites, have existing trees and hedgerows specifically along 93rd Street that we want to see maintained. And plating them into reserves allows us the opportunity to do that. Of the issues raised during Planning Commission, several dealt with traffic onto Broadway, what the intention is or how 93rd Street is to be used, and if so, how it's going to be improved to a paved standard capable of handling industrial traffic, knowing that we have three residents right at the intersection with Broadway. That would be impacted by that, and obviously the land use conflict perceived by many of the people who spoke in opposition. With that, I'll stand for any questions that you may have regarding the, the application. The owner or the applicant is also here to address the council and any questions you may have.
Thank you, Russ. Charles?
Yeah, I, I had a question. The owner talked at Planning Commission about placing a frontage road all the way from, I think it'd be 85 up to 93 and possibly all the way to 101. Is that still in the plan?
As far as staff knows, correct, yes. It would tie in with Arena Drive to the south and come up between what would be ultimately usable platted lots along the highway and Saddle Brook then to the west. And then it would continue up to 101st Street and terminate there at an appropriate distance from that interchange.
Thank you. Ben?
I have a couple of questions just here. Let me get over to the right tabs here. So this was brought up, I've read through what's been presented, the minutes and such from the zoning meeting. Concerning number 16, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from professional persons knowledgeable on this request that would be helpful in its evaluation? Now, Russ, you serve as, obviously, as our planning employee.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Could you just for the record here, give us your qualifications as in, concerning this specific thing on number 16?
I will with the caveat that these are certainly debatable, and I can appreciate that they would be debatable. No, in my profession, AICP, the American Institute of Certified Planners, is the official or the highest certification afforded to planners. There are maybe a half a dozen to eight states that require licensure. We don't have that in the state of Kansas. And I've been doing this, after my master's degree from Kansas State University in 1995, I've been working in this field since, actually, my internship in the summer of 94 with Wichita-Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Department.
Okay. So concerning this, when we talk about number 16 specifically, that was brought up, it looks like a couple of times and everything, as part of this, I believe that that's a very firm answer and that we have knowledgeable professional experience that recommends this, would be my takeaway from, from that.
My ego is such that it's certainly debatable. And, and like most of those 17 factors, they are subjective. We wish that this analysis could be more objective, and we try to keep it as objective as possible. But certainly, everyone's thoughts and feelings and emotions play into the decision. What we try to do in these zoning matters, and you've probably heard, if not Doug, at least myself, mentioned several times, that on zoning matters, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. So in any event, we try to maintain an objective viewpoint, not impassioned on one side or the other. Correct?
Perfect. The second question I have is related to the plat that's presented in there. Looking at the plat that's presented, that's not the entire area that is being, is that correct?
I think I would have done everybody a better service if I would have tried to superimpose that on this graphic that's up in front of you all. So if you can imagine, you see the very north side of Saddle Brook. Right above it, you will see the two parallel streets, east and west, comprising of Briar Brook Edition. Both of those share a, the same east line of the subdivision. If you were to carry their east line north, you can kind of see that drainage swale. It starts to dome out to the northwest, west, and then it comes back down approximately 300 feet south of 93rd Street. So the bulk of that western half will, is proposed for residential development.
Okay, so again, and maybe this is a question for Kirk as well, as the engineer on this. What is the approximate space then between the east boundary of this residential to where it would, the property line ends at 135? Do we know about how much?
Maybe, maybe 800 to 1,000 feet if we consider 2,600, an odd change being a half mile. That's roughly Saddle Brook and Briar Brook, and this proposed Briar Brook Second Edition, I believe, come 1,600 feet north to, or east to west.
Okay, so it leaves about 1,000?
About 1,000 feet. That's 800 feet.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I, I don't need it to the, to the measurement. That at least gives a good idea.
It certainly prevent, it certainly allows for 70 to 80-foot Collector Street right-of-way, a buffer to Saddle Brook, and then adequate depth for most moderate-sized, I'd say mid-sized commercial industrial lots.
Okay, but there, yeah, that's, it's not going to be massive. We're not talking, I mean, any area that's available for plating, that would be... We're not talking, I mean, any area that's available for plating that would be general commercial, there's not, we're not talking Amazon-size.
Or even Pratt Industries, both sit on 80 acres.
Yeah, there's no way that that would fit anywhere along that stretch of 1,000 feet, when you take out the buffers and everything. Again, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I'm just trying to get a good idea of what spaces there that would be really, truly available for GC, so. Just a rough, but we're good. I'm good.
We would experience smaller lots, similar and smaller commercial and industrial lots in, say, the I-35 Arena Edition that contains, the Arena formerly known as Hartman. And some of that smaller to mid-sized quasi-industrial, service-industry-based type of users such as ditch witch. These would be slightly larger, more on the Harper Camperland type of sites.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Charlie?
Russ, I appreciate your comments. I do have just some questions. I have several here. So, as far as the zoning factors on zoning numbers one and two, it talks about the existing uses of the property and the surrounding neighborhood. And number one lists it's agriculture, residential, commercial, and industrial. But then on number two, it asks for the zoning around the current neighborhood, and it all lists just residential. So, what, why, what's the difference there? Help me understand that.
Well, use doesn't necessarily predicate the zoning. I think we should have, I thought there was a different one. So, in the immediate vicinity, obviously, everything from Saddle Brook, Briar Brook, the application area, ownership up to 101st Street are all zoned R2, single-family residential as our default zoning district. So, the city always utilizes one of the two residential districts as its default. And so, as property is annexed in, it is annexed in at that R2 district, which is why we have all the R2 zoning in place now since the annexation wars of the early, early 2000s.
Okay.
Obviously, south of 85th Street, we have industrial uses at that location. Then we have approximately 60 acres or so of C2 commercial zoning that's undeveloped. So, again, it's agriculture, although it's zoned for heavier commercial uses.
Okay. So, you're, on number one, you're kind of spreading down farther on Broadway, the way I understand it. You're not just doing the surrounding neighborhood.
The Broadway corridor.
Although it asks for that. It asks for the surrounding neighborhood, but you're, you're including a larger part of the city. Is that right?
I am, yes. A lot of our comprehensive plan talks about the Broadway corridor and the interchange areas.
Okay. On number five, talking about significant change, you said there would be no significant change, but this zoning change is changing a residential area to an industrial area. Correct?
Certainly, a commercial and industrial area, correct. I would argue that it's a pretty even mix of agricultural uses and residential, which, of course, we know from northeast Kansas that agricultural uses certainly are some of the more onerous to developing urban residential development.
Okay. I guess, I just, I guess I disagree with you on that one. I think there is a significant change. And number nine, it talks about within the city, the area of the city, there's not sufficient land for larger industrial projects. However, the question is asking for land vacant for that area, not just within this area of the city. So, is, is there no land within Park City that's available for development of this type? Is that what you're saying?
100%. I think the question asked, is there a zoning district? Are there, is there properties zoned, in this circumstance, general commercial, available for development? The answer is no.
Correct. Is there other land that's not zoned general commercial that is available, is my question?
I would certainly assume that there would be quite an extensive amount, yes.
I think on number 12 was, I think you're a little misleading on that as far as, again, general zoning district can be considered compatible with the other uses in the area. Yes, I mean, there is residential in that area, but I do believe that it also includes Broadway, which is industrial, but it's farther down south on Broadway, not in the immediate area, which was indicated. And then my last one, or actually, two on 14, it says the comprehensive plan's future land map indicates the area appropriate for residential uses. The staff's opinion, this request meets the general intent of the plan specifically when considering the mix of residential, commercial, and industrial projects. Well, again, I don't think we're talking about, I don't think that's addressing the neighborhood in that area. When you look at the comprehensive plan, it says specifically, "As may be expected, industrial businesses can create environmental problems. The physical separations of such industrial area from the main residential part of the city is of mutual benefit to both types of land use. Fortunately, only a small portion of the residential development on Broadway is intermixed with industrial activity." If you look at the land use on the general, the comprehensive plan, it says, "To protect the character and quality of residential neighborhoods from the intrusion of incompatible land uses, unnecessary through traffic and negative environmental features, continue to expand the industrial potential of Broadway," which I think you talked about when you're talking farther south on Broadway, "and I-35 interstate, improve the appearance of the area, and remove blighting influence of incompatible mixtures of commercial, industrial, and residential uses." Additionally, I think the future land map also shows it as, of our comprehensive plan, shows it as being residential and being a good residential area. My last question is, I know that there was a hearing about a rezoning to light industrial at 85th and 135 several years ago, which was denied. So, what, what is the difference between including industrial now in this neighborhood as opposed to what it was before when it was denied?
That's a great question, and I would say consistency. I think staff recommended approval of that one specific industrial land use several years ago at 85th and 135th. Staff was in support of that and as, trying to be as consistent and as transparent as possible. That's why I'm consistent with this recommendation as well. That one was denied. The state statutes clearly empower you as the governing body of the city of Park City to make final decisions on zoning matters, and so, staff is just one of the first steps in reaching that decision. And all 17 factors can be taken together and agreed upon, they can be taken apart and disagreed on in whole, or you can pick and choose. So, in that circumstance, you have a staff report, and what we do is staff has their own, I have my own findings of fact. Those are either accepted by the Planning Commission as part of their recommendation to coincide with or to agree with my recommendation. If the council here tonight wants to diverge from that or supersede, override the Planning Commission and deny the application, which would take a two-thirds supermajority as opposed to a three-quarter supermajority, then that's something that we can craft tonight, findings that would support that reversed decision.
I guess I'll just close with this. I, I've had a lot of people contact me about this in opposition, very concerned about this. I think as a council, to begin to build industrial areas around residential areas, we're setting a precedent. I don't think people build homes and builds, and look at where they're building homes, thinking that in the future, there will be industrial areas. I think our comprehensive plan talks about that specifically, about how we want to keep those separate. So, I, I think rezoning it to allow industrial uses in and around a neighborhood is setting a precedent that is not something that we would, we should do.
Thank you. Jim?
Russ, without being specific, help me understand on the complaints, or the petitions, what, what part of the perimeter of this, did those come from?
By and large, to the north and to the west, which is really, if you look at, I'm not sure if you received the memo that I put together as far as the protest.
Yeah.
The, the third page has a map that indicates which properties filed protests, which properties of those that filed protest were counted towards the 20% threshold. And you will see that even though we notified across the interstate, no harm, no foul on over notifying, but we really had protests from really only the properties that could protest. We had some people, I think there was five protest petitions or four protest petitions filed across the roadway east. The radius of 200 feet doesn't get across the interstate right-of-way. So, those didn't count towards the petition. We had some technical discussions. There was a property owner across the street, or across Broadway to the west, that filed two pro, excuse me, two protest petitions. One property was in her name, that's valid. There was a second property that she filed on that didn't have a, the second owner of that property as a signatory. So, we discounted that. We were over 20% one way or the other. If we did count that other protest petition, we would have added 5%, roughly 31% instead of 26% protest, but.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I think everything else has been asked already. Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, so, can you help me understand the classification? Councilman Davidson was talking about industrial use. The request is general commercial. Do those overlap at all? I mean, I know we talked, we had the issue that was brought up two years ago about rezoning to industrial too. That was overturned by council and such like that. What does GC allow for? And would that also require zoning changes for this preliminary plat that's going to be residential? Or being proposed as residential?
All right, let me see if I got all that. So, the double-edged sword of general commercial, I think it comes to council member Davidson's, some of his concerns and some of my findings in the staff report, I think there was a lot of failure to, based on the name or something, a failure to really appreciate the fact that that general commercial district, and I have, separate from this conversation, concerns about that zoning district that you will see as the council here before the end of the year to rectify. But it allows residential. It is truly a wide-open mixed-use designation. So, do, do we further the idea that it's what the applicant is proposing to do, and we assume that it's going to be industrial and commercial? Obviously, it will be along the interstate, as far as I'm concerned. But is the zoning district compatible to the uses around it? Well, general commercial allows residential development. It's providing land for that plat. I do not, clearly, this plat does not need to be zoned general commercial. I'd strongly argue against it, which is why that first condition staff's recommending would preclude or eliminate the legal description once that's platted from the zoning ordinance. So, instead of having that 124 acres zoned general commercial, we will have something more along the lines of, say, maybe 70 acres of general commercial zoning.
So, GC, the general commercial allows for residential, commercial, and industrial within that there?
That's correct.
Okay. And is it a wide-open industrial use?
I would say, in the context of this discussion on this zoning application at this location, I don't think we need to split the sheets on what industrial uses are allowed versus they're not. They would allow manufacturing and warehousing, and those are, you know, I mean, I think anything that we would imagine as being industrial, sales lots, again, manufacturing, distribution, warehousing, which we would be expecting, would all fall under the I-1 district and the general commercial district.
Okay.
And even in the I-1 district, not to get too far in the weeds, it does really pluck out a lot of the more onerous metal salvaging, recycling, and things like that for special use consideration. So, even those types of noxious industrial uses wouldn't be permitted by right in either of the zoning districts, and quite frankly, even in the I-2 district, requires a lot of special use applications.
Okay. And are there any special uses or any types of build-ins, basically? I don't see anything within the staff findings or the 17 findings there related to any sort of requirements by the developer to ensure, whether it's the lighting issues or things like that, and I can't think of the right word I'm looking for, but are there anything, are there any requirements that the developer has to maintain along that side, or is that something that would be considered further down?
I will certainly let him talk about what his intentions are as creating the buffer between the three, the two and the one proposed third residential project and his commercial-industrial projects that would face the highway. So, I know that he has talked often to staff and publicly about utilizing some of the stockpiled dirt to create berms, similar to what was discussed in some ways with the truck stop special use application from several years ago. Drainage and utility easements often come into factor. Road right-of-way, again, is a design feature that we can try to work with the applicant and manipulate to try to create a buffer between the land use and the residential. But I would let Mr. Robele speak to his intentions on what he's looking to provide as far as screening goes.
Thank you. George Glover?
Yeah. Reference to number 15. Staff received several calls regarding this application from area property owners. One expressed concern with the encroachment of non-residential uses in the area, and one wished to see some of the trees along the Broadway frontage be saved. You had talked about modifications earlier. Can you talk a little bit about that as far as encroachment of non-residential uses in the area, what modifications will have to be made?
Let me reread what I wrote. Well, encroachment just may, I've been at this a long time, and I've, do zoning throughout my career. So, I, after a couple of thousand zoning cases and about 1,000 Planning Commission, you hear some of the same things, and that is, these people felt when they built or owned the property that they were building far enough away that they could keep their piece of rural suburban portions of Sedgwick County. And as we've seen on the west side of Wichita, the southeast side of Wichita, the east side of Wichita, you see encroachments of development, residential or otherwise. So, in that sense, we are, this application, once fully developed, is going to run counter to why they, the reasons why they purchased the place where they, where they purchased it. That's, that's the only thing I can describe as far as encroachment. That gentleman is also here and can speak perhaps to some of his feelings better on that issue. I spoke to a gentleman who was not at our Planning Commission meeting, who, like several others, there's a nice stand of trees, if you remembered the, the aerial. There is a fairly decent amount of acreages heavily treed. Some of that's being removed for a sewer main extension as we speak. Some of it's going to be removed for the development of Briar Brook Second Edition. So, really, they wanted to save trees, and they just didn't want their piece of Sedgwick County to be spoiled by urban growth.
Okay, thank you.
Charles?
The way I see this is, you know, we've got Valley Center on, on the west side, and we've got Bel Air on the east side, and Kechai on the east side, Wichita on the south side. Our growth is going to be north, and that's why we included so much of this area in the city limits. It's, I think it's unfortunate, you know, that some of the people feel that they're being encroached on, but what they're actually being encroached on with is another residential district, because that's what's going to be next to the three neighbors on the north is more residential. And I would think, I would think that that would be, you know, an advantage to those people, not a disadvantage, other than the fact that they're going to have closer neighbors. That's not, you know, that's, that's something that you can't, you can't stop, you know, you can't, they don't own that land, you know, so they don't get to choose what goes on it necessarily, but having neighbor, having neighbors next to neighbors, I think, is, is probably a pretty fair deal. The frontage that would be zoned commercial can have commercial, and it speaks of the industrial as light industrial. as light industrial in the ordinance. So, you know, it's not going to be, it's not going to be heavy industrial. And it's on, it's next to I-35, I-135. That's a corridor, you know, coming into Wichita, you know? And it's, you know, if you saw, I don't know if anybody saw the news shows tonight on the Starbond issue showing the project, you know? We're going to, we're going to have a lot of people coming into town and there's, and that they're going to be coming right past that property. It's going to be great commercial property, you know? And I think probably is going to find out it's going to be more valuable as commercial property than it would be as even as light industrial. And, but I don't, I don't know how we, I don't know how we can say, oh, we're going to keep, we're going to keep, we're going to let them build residential all the way up Broadway and then turn around and say, but nobody can build anything, you know, close to interstate. It just doesn't make any sense to me, you know? We have ordinances that protect those residences by, you know, by berms, by tree rows, you know, this sort of thing and separation in the number of feet that they can build close to those. And I would think since this builder is going to be doing both sides, he's going to be doing the development of the residential, he's going to be very interested in keeping the residential portion that's going to be up against the commercial. I would think he would be pretty concerned about keeping that, you know, very pleasing, you know, to the residents that are going to be living on the far east side of that building. But this is what, this is, I know it's, you know, this is what development is all about, you know? Every city that expands moves outward, one direction or the other, or all directions. We only have one direction that we can go, you know? And I think they've done a good job setting this thing up to where it should be, it should be pleasing to the residences in, on both sides of it, actually all three sides of it, I would think. But yeah, that's all I can think of right now. But that's kind of my thoughts on the thing.
Thank you, Charles. Charlie?
Just to add to that, Charles, just to be clear, because you kind of talked about industrial and commercial and residential. I don't think, and to Russ's comment, I don't think, all the constituents that have reached to me, out to me, not one of them have been concerned about development or encroachment of development, residential, even the commercial that's to the south and to the east of Saddle Brook. The underlying, I guess, theme that I see in what I'm being contacted about is the mix of industrial land use next to a residential area. That's what I continue to see. I, you know, I agree with you. Yeah, they don't own the land, things of that nature. It is the I-35 corridor. You said it'd be pleasing commercial. We're not looking at a commercial zoning case. We're looking at the possibility of having industrial. That's what the community members are concerned about and reaching out to me about. I don't think it's necessarily encroachment or the development of the area is the industrial aspect of that area.
Yeah, I like the term light industrial because it sure eliminates a lot of things, you know, that if you say industrial, boy, that opens the, that opens the box wide.
It does, but we also have a, we have a comprehensive plans that says not to mix residential and industrial. So I guess if we have a, why have a comprehensive plan if we're not going to follow it? I mean, why even have it?
Yeah, I guess it's, it's the opinion of whether or not, I don't feel it's mixing them. I feel it's a separation between the two, you know? And it's, that's, it goes all the way down, you know? There's, there's going to be residential sections adjacent to commercial and light industrial all the way up and down the corridor eventually. I mean, look on, look on the west side of the, excuse me, on the east side of I-135. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of land there that's going to develop sometime or another.
What areas are going to be residential and industrial over there, do you think?
Any place there's a land available, you know, could have the same situation. And I just don't see where we can, where we can block it all off and say, oh, well, you can't have anything even close to a residential district. That's why we have the, that's why we have the rules, you know, that we've set up in the planning commission to separate the two.
And I, again, I just, I'll go back to it. I don't think it's having something next to residential. I think it's the industrial aspect that, the theme I get from my constituents of everybody that's reached out to me and what they're concerned of.
Okay, all right. I'm going to move on. Troy's lit up too. We've got a couple others. So Troy, your act.
I've kind of, I've been back and forth on this whole situation since this started, since people started reaching out to me. I guess my concern is, I'm new to this. I don't really understand light, commercial, this commercial and that commercial. I guess my question is, I mean, what's going to go there? Is it just going to be factories? Is it going to be, you know, I mean, are we going to put a truck stop there? I don't think we have the room for it. But I guess that's my concern. Everybody says, well, we don't want this and we don't want that. I get that and I understand that. I don't know if I'd want to have my house right behind that same area when I sit there and think about it.
Yeah, it's very similar to Pratt Industries just down the road.
Okay. We'll have the applicant come up in a minute and maybe could answer some of the questions that you have, if he wants, of course. Ben?
Yeah, Ben, I do a couple of things just in between listening here on this. One, my understanding is light industrial, a truck stop would not be an option based upon that there. So that's already eliminated out of this application there. So we know that's out. But that said, I'm looking through the minutes and again, I don't want to go into a he said, she said over, or he said, he said in this case. But there are several ones that in the minutes from our meeting talk about the frustration with commercial construction and that don't mention industrial. So I, there are a lot of people that are against the idea of even commercial. So I don't think it's a complete picture to say they're only against industrial because that's mentioned here. Second off, I will say, when we talk about a plan, we actually just voted for a contract on Viking where we have a plan of what we can use in terms of going out for bids. And several on here voted to go against using that plan. So my point being, I'm not, that's not a change one way or another on that vote. I'm just saying that we don't always follow plans either. And we didn't tonight. So I'm not saying one, I'm for one way or another. I'm just simply saying we don't always follow our plans, period. And that's done already tonight, so.
Thank you, Ben. Terry?
Russ, you mentioned Pratt Industries, so I'm going to follow with that is, because I can, I can speak firsthand for residential next to Pratt Industries and the effect and the impact that that has had on that neighborhood, neighborhoods. So, you know, that's, you know, if something like that would be coming in, I definitely wouldn't be for it. But I'm going to then jump on the other hand and say, you know, along the 135 corridor, if that's all looked at to be residential in that whole plat, that whole area, you know, who's going on a build in that east 70 acres? You know, nobody's going to want a house. Nobody's going to, you know? So that forces a landowner to say, we've got to keep empty land. So I know there's, you know, there's, there's places for it. There's, so I see both sides of the coin.
Certainly.
This is where I'm at tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, and to Ben, I just wanted to comment that the theme, the overall theme, yes, I know they're, in the minutes, they do say general commercial, but overall theme that I get from emails and everything was a theme of industrial. That's why I mentioned that specifically.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant want to come and speak at all?
Mayor Costello, thank you for your time. My purpose and my plan in this is not for manufacturing, no huge warehouses. Two years ago, we came and we invited Saddle Brook to a meeting on the first Briarwood as a buffer. We brought them into our office. We told them what we're trying to do. They liked the idea. Now we're bringing another buffer. What we're thinking is a commercial business on the highway, couple roads back to the, to the residential. And that would be, you see what I build? I build warehouses. So we'll build maybe a 20,000 square foot warehouse, whatever the customer needs. But it's not going to be no 500,000 square foot warehouses, probably not even a 200,000 square foot warehouse. So we own this ground there and then we own the ground to the north, to other, we own 400 acres or more up there. And we purchased that for a reason, to develop it for Park City and for me. And you guys have helped me through all this, through all these years, you've been supportive of everything that I've ever done. I'm not thinking about building a truck stop again. I went down that alley once, I'll never go down it again. So what we're trying to do here is take the ground that we bought and develop it on a tax basis instead of agriculture tax basis where you're getting pennies on the dollar as a city right now. And that's all I got to say about it. Anyone got a question? Thank you.
Questions? Charles?
So your idea of what you would like to put there is, is going to be more on the commercial side? Is that your goal?
Yes.
And a small warehouse would be a commercial?
That'd be, that'd be like, like light industrial. Because in order to be a warehouse, you've got to be, it's got to be considered industrial. You can't put a commercial building like in front of Saddle Brook. I can't, that's commercial. I can't go in there and build a warehouse. Now, it could be like a tire store or, you know, a gas station or a restaurant or, so what I thought, my thought process is to take the road from 85th Street, not parallel to the highway, kind of divide it. Because on 101st Street, it ramps up high. So we're going to come back probably four, 500, 300 feet from the highway where the road would come in. So that'd be all commercial for businesses like, I don't know what's going to happen there. Who knows? But like stores or, you know, convenience, you know, I don't know really what's going to be there. But as far as industrial, heavy industrial, that's not what we're trying to attempt to. And we're trying to attempt to not big, huge warehouses like I've built in the past on the highway there. Smaller warehousing is, there's a big need for it. And I've stated this years ago that Park City's, there's only one place for the warehousing business to go or any warehouses, any buildings, it's north. If you go to the east, the west, or the south, there's nothing there. You guys are in a great position for growth, for that purpose. And I understand the other side of the fact, the residential people are concerned. And what I'm telling you as, as a developer, and I've been in this town for 30 years now, if I tell you I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. I'm not going to go back behind your backs and all of a sudden you're going to see a 300,000 square foot manufacturing plant out there with tires or whatever. That's not going to happen.
Okay. Another question, since you're the, would be the developer of the residential section also on the, on the west side. Can you speak to the efforts that you want to make to create the proper buffer zone?
Yes, we will use, either we'll use a berms and trees around that or if it's some, how would I say it? There's, say we had a 50,000 square foot building right up against that. I would say then you would do a concrete wall or, you know, something like that nature. And you wouldn't set the building right up against the property line. You'd offset it away from it. But most of the time, anyone in a small warehouse business, it's not a 24/7 business anyway. It's a seven to six or seven to five business. They're not running two or three shifts. The exception is TMX, which we built on 61st Street. They run three shifts and they employ almost 400 people in this city right now. And they keep growing. So that's a, they're leasing between the space on Prospect and the space on the highway, almost a million and a half square foot. And they keep growing. And the reason they're growing is because of the cost in the Midwest versus the east or west coast. And they're closing their plants and they're moving them here. So you're going to see they grow. That's why I asked for the industrial revenue bond exemption because I see it coming. And that's more or less is why. But there will be buffers.
Thank you.
So I have a question. You brought up on the residential that you're developing in there. Is there, I just curious lot sizes of those? And then possibly, I know obviously the market changes, well, tomorrow it'll be different. But what are price ranges in these residences?
Most of, the one we're doing right now, what are our lots, TJ?
500,000, 500,000, $600,000 on that. It's in the side.
Most of those lots in there are about three eighths of an acre on the north side. And then your duplexes are up against the, towards the highway. But most of those lots are going to be in a three eighths of an acre lot.
Very good. Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, here and none. Thank you. Okay, next, we have just four people signed up tonight. If you're welcome to come up, I'll start in order of Ryan Bogati. I'd ask you that, are, we do have the minutes from the planning and zoning meeting. So we have everything that you said on that. So if you'd stick to anything new in that or hit the high points and just, okay?
I appreciate it. My name's Ryan Bogatay. I have two properties.
We'll give you three minutes to do it and then your timer will go off, so don't freak out.
I'll go as fast as I can. I have two properties on 93rd Street, right across the street from this, this property. I would like you all to think about this, if this was going in across the street from your house, including you. I know you say that it's got to happen, but think about it going across the street from your $700,000 house and your family and your kids running out on the street with trucks driving by. Think about that for a little while. I also want to say that I oppose this, but I also oppose how Park City has done this. There is no transparency in this whatsoever. I called the zoning commission when this first started Briarbrook one and I asked why, what they were building because I knew it was agricultural. And I said, when did this get rezoned? And Debbie at zoning told me it didn't. And then I find out May 9th of 2023, a small group of you rezoned this with no notification of anybody around. So then we go to the zoning commission and we get our opportunity and we knock 12 of those 17 off of that list between us. And that zoning commission could not wait to vote that through. It honestly was very corrupt, the way that it happened. And I hope that doesn't trickle from the top down. I hope that's not here too. I also read in an article that you guys have already approved $100 million tax relief for this project. And unless that article is wrong, I don't see how you approve $100 million tax relief on a project that hasn't even been zoned yet. That doesn't seem right. There's obviously some closed doors and I don't think that's fair to the citizens. So I want to oppose the way that you're doing this because maybe next time you won't do it like this. Because we're angry about the way it's being done. We could care less if residential had come up to my house. I would, I wouldn't mind that at all. It's, it's the very vague way of what's going to happen in the commercial area. Are the trucks going to come down 93rd Street where my seven-year-old plays? Are they going to come down Broadway where all the Valley Center High School kids turn left on 93rd to go to the high school? Are they going to come down 85th where there's a rec every month at that intersection in Broadway? Are they going to come down 101st, which is not even a two-lane road? There, I mean, there's very little information that's been given to us. And that, and that's why we're opposing it. That's why we're angry about it. We would like you to be more transparent in situations like this. If the developer would have come along and said, hey, this is it. This is what I'm doing, we probably wouldn't have a bit as big of a problem as we do now. So I just ask that when you vote on this, that you think about it going across So I just ask that when you vote on this, that you think about it going across the street from your house, including you. Think about it going across the street from your house, and your grandchildren out in the yard playing as those semis drive by. That's all I got.
However, you kill it.
Elizabeth Cooper Smith?
I thank you for coming tonight. We're offering three minutes tonight. If you want to speak, you're welcome. And again, you probably heard what I already said to him, so thank you.
Sure. Hey, I address this, I don't want this to count on my three minutes, because I want to address you guys about something completely un-based, un-involved with this. We can barely hear you. Am I right? Ben, I couldn't hear you at all when you were speaking. And when we were told at the zoning meeting that y'all would be mic'd up, some of us were hard of hearing, and I would like to hear what's going on, so.
Thank you. We'll get that turned up.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. The number one thing I want to address is Russ, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his last name. He kept referring that there was a discussion in the zoning meeting. There was no discussion in the zoning meeting. I was there. A bunch of us landowners came in, we made a presentation, and then they voted. There was no discussion. So please don't think that those people listened to what we said and went on with it. The part of this proposal is supposed to be residential, okay? Why, if they want it to be residential, this part here, it's on the screen now, why are they making it general construction if it's going to be residential? I am scared to death because this man, this gentleman has not proposed, has not given a plat that says, this is what I'm going to do. When I go into business, and I did go into business, Brandy, you know me, and I went and I drew up a business plan, and I went A, B, C, and D. Why isn't that being done? Why is it just that, oh, we're going to give him a general, a GC, and he can do whatever he wants, and then we can go back in and rezone this residential, if that's what he decides to do? We are not getting it, it's not getting nailed down as being residential for this. I have no idea what he's actually going to do. I know what he says he's going to do. And regarding the general commercial, that's wide open. Did you guys realize that could be a salvage yard? I mean, there is, general commercial gives anything. I just, I have lived up there for 30 years, and I own about 30 acres. Why, I agree with Charlie, why is it that we are having to fight industrial, fight commercial in our backyards when it is residential all in that area? There is no businesses in that area. And I think that's all I have to say. But I would like to really state that I really want to keep any industrial out of that area. I'd like to keep commercial out as well. I'd like it to be all residential. If that doesn't happen, but let's keep anything big and dangerous and keep the GC out of it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joseph Badka. Ben, just start time. Thank you.
Hello, yeah. Joseph Badka. I'm with the Saddle Brook community, just adjacent to the areas that we're discussing. I come to you with some opposition, and I actually stood up here not too long ago when we were talking about potentially putting an industrial area to the corner of the neighborhood as well. Some of the things that concern me have already been kind of discussed, and that is kind of the generalities in which we're talking. As the lady that before me just mentioned, we're here specifically talking about putting in some residential. So I don't understand why we need to include that in a rezoning for general commercial. If it's going to stay residential, why not just leave it residential? And then building off of that, if everything that the gentleman said after Mr. Uwe had talked is true about it being commercial, then I don't understand why we can't just come out and say, with some transparency, let's go ahead and zone this for commercial one, or commercial two, or what have you. The general commercial zoning is, almost is the catch-all, to give somebody the opportunity to say, you know what, like, maybe that's not quite the way I wanted to go after all. There's large concern, for me at least, and a lot of people in my neighborhood, about the amount of truck traffic that we are introducing to the neighborhood if we move forward with this. I believe the lady before me mentioned, that is, 93rd is the direct entrance for all of our students who go to the high school, and also, excuse me, and also the middle school in Valley Center as well. If we start introducing a whole lot of truck traffic, a whole lot of truck traffic, how...
Sorry.
Anyways, you get, I don't need to beat a dead horse. We understand the truck situation and the concerns that rise there. I will just say this in closing. Our neighborhood has been booming. We have been building houses, and they have been selling. And the new future, somebody obviously saw some opportunity and knew that there would be residential growth, because we're already breaking ground and building more residential. So why take an area that doesn't even have a direct exit from the highway and put these doors in, when we can continue to build our community and our neighborhoods and make it a larger place for people to want to move into and maybe get away from all of the excess? Plenty of room down by Hartman and that area, where it's already zoned industrial, for growth down there as well, with direct exit and on-ramp. So that was my two cents. I appreciate your time. I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Sobbing?
I am Debbie Sobbing. I live at the corner of 93rd and Broadway. It's the northwest corner of the corner we're talking about here. And I'm going to be really short. There's not, I don't have a whole lot. I wanted to just give you a quick background. I'm from Derby, Kansas. I started living there when I was first grade in 1984. And I remember as a young person, probably in my early twenties, that I was driving into town on one of these major highways, and they told me, they were from Kansas City, and north of the river of Kansas City. And they said, isn't it funny how in Kansas, every time you welcome people into town, you start, you start, you come into industrial buildings and trailer parks? And I thought that was very interesting, and that has stuck with me since about 19 years old. And here we are, I live in Valley Center, but I'm your neighbor in Park City. And I think to myself, why do we want to welcome all of our new residents with these big buildings and trailer parks? Like, there are places for industrial buildings. I want, I know there's a need for that. I know there's a need for commercial. I like to go to the stores and shop myself. But there's also a place, there's neighbors, and we need to be kind to them. And mixing neighborhoods with industry makes no sense. I also am a firsthand witness to the corner there, of all of our children coming from Park City, from possibly the Bell Area area, as well as Valley Center, and they're turning left onto these roads. These 14, 15, 16, 17-year-olds turning left, and they're already having trouble, they're not great drivers to begin with, let's face it. But now you're going to mix some big trucks, additional roadways. I know this city itself has deemed this as a dangerous road already. It's been proven by the two signs you have both directions saying dangerous road, or dangerous highway, or whatnot. And then you emphasized that last year by putting blinking lights on every intersection. And now we want to increase the traffic in the same area where all of your children and grandchildren are going to be turning. I don't see how that's beneficial to anyone. So I want you to consider that when you're voting tonight. Also, in the proposal originally at the rezoning meeting, they talked about subsequent materials and studies that were going to be provided, which I have never seen, I don't know if any of you have ever seen. I have not seen a traffic study yet to say it's a good idea, that this welcomes this new idea. I did not see anything about flood. The last meeting, they were shocked that it actually floods at 93rd and Broadway. But boy, I will encourage all of you. Just last week, we had a major rain for about 30 minutes. My yard was flooded. The first weekend I moved in 2021 to that corner, the people I bought from graciously told me, hey, when it floods, go down to Hope in the Valley and grab your koi fish, because they're going to swim to the next pond. And sure enough, that very first weekend, it was Labor Day weekend, you might all remember, the whole road flooded over, and there was a bunch of kids out there in their Jeeps, having a great time going through floodwaters. So when we build industrial buildings, have we considered, where does the water go? Does it go flood, Hope in the Valley? Is there a plan? What are we going to do for Park City? What are you going to tell your residents who are trying to move here when their basements are flooding? Have we even considered, because I haven't seen it. I'm assuming everyone has planned this, but I have not seen any material saying that there's any kind of flood awareness up there.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
I would just ask, before you vote, to think about your neighbor. Think about if you are going to buy that house. And the last thing is very suspicious, about why are we going to build all these houses, sell all these houses, and then make the residents aware of what's going to be plotted right behind their home? How would you feel if you bought a house, maybe saved up for years, bought a house, and then right behind it comes an industrial building that you cannot sell now?
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Your time's up. Russ, I have a question. I wanted to follow up on something one of the speakers said. First off, with the general commercial, does this allow a salvage yard to be in this place?
It does not. And it does not allow that as a special use either. Having said that, it does allow general commercial in the industrial section, so in the zoning regulations, it would be section four. It does allow vehicle storage yards, which would be similar to the use right north of Leakers, for example. There is an insurance lot there where tow trucks will take totaled vehicles and wait for them to be processed through the insurance company, things like that. That'd be a vehicle storage yard. So the council would have the ability to override the planning commission's recommendation, which is straight general commercial, and eliminate some of those uses, or retain if it seems like the conversation's centering around commercial, or the industrial element of the general commercial district. So the industrial portion of the general commercial district allows light manufacturing, research, services and testing, outdoor storage, vehicle storage yards, warehousing, welding and machine shops, and wholesale business services. Wholesale business service would be similar to like ditch witch, and things of that nature. Warehousing is obviously something the applicant mentioned is his intention. And then light manufacturing, or manufacturing is allowed in the I-1 light industrial district is exactly the verbiage in the regulations. Those are things that the council could deem unnecessary and remove from the list of permitted uses by right in the general commercial zoning, if the council so feels a need.
And we can do that tonight, rather than send it back to the planning commission?
At your, yeah, at your discretion.
Okay, I'd really like to see that if there is a motion in support. Next question I have would be for the applicant, if you could come back up. In regards to traffic, I just have a question for you. Obviously, in what order, as you're constructing these, the residential, I obviously see some of it started, this first phase of it, at what point are you going to start the part that's along, that relies a butts up to I-135?
It could be, it could be years from now. We're doing this first, and we can't really do the commercial side until we bring the road parallel to the highway. So we have to have activity, commercial activity interest around 85th in the front of Saddle Brook before we could extend the road throughout that, because of the specials and the cost of all that. If you build a two-mile road, you're talking probably $5 million, probably.
Right.
And that ain't counting the sewer. We already, we already put the lift station in to support this and to support the prior one. That's on my dime. I mean, I got to pay for that, so.
Okay.
Our thought is this first residential, see how that goes, and then we would come off of 85th Hartman Drive and probably get to 93rd and stop at that point. But there will not be no semis going through a residential area back to Broadway. The only way that semi, what, excuse me?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The only way you would have semis, if we widen 93rd Street and return back to Broadway to make a loop around. That's not in our plan at this point. We, our plan is to get to 101st Street to stay parallel to the highway with the semis, not down Broadway.
I got to tell you, that's my preference, is if this access road is its own feeder road of the businesses that are a but, I-135 highway.
Yes.
Okay. And Russ, one more question. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you for coming up. I know, I saw in the minutes of the planning commission meeting, there was a discussion about, and I know we've changed our building regulations on commercial businesses, there was one about screening from Mr. Bogati about a tree every 40 feet being adequate. Is that something that, is that still the case, or do we now require more screening than that?
That is the code requirement.
Right now?
Right now.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We got, Brandy?
Russ, in Park City, is there a...
Try to speak into your mic, sorry.
In Park City, is there another area that's GC zoned, that you can give me an example?
There's one, and one only, and that's the Kansas Coliseum, the former Kansas Coliseum, the NIR campus is zoned general commercial.
Okay. And then around the surrounding communities, because I don't know what all their zoning codes, is there, is there anything that's similar to this? Just so I have an example.
So I'm not sure. I wasn't privy to the construction of the 2013 zoning regulations, which was pretty much what the modern regulations are based on. We have certainly, I've been in front of you many times with several different text amendments, will continue with text amendments during my time here. But by and large, the answer is no. So does Wichita have a general commercial zoning district that looks, do portions of it look strikingly similar to what Park City put in there in 2013? Most communities would separate out the residential component from a heavier commercial or industrial district, certainly industrial districts. So general commercial in Wichita functions very similar to our C2 zoning district. It probably allows a little bit or quasi-industrial stuff, machine shops, welding shops, small-scale manufacturing. And the definition of what is manufacturing is cumbersome and not very good. It has to deal with the machinery that one uses and the horsepower rating of that machinery. So it's not really a very good barometer of what could possibly go in there. So to answer your question, this is a very unique, in Sedgwick County zoning district. Most other places would simply take care of mixed-use developments. For example, if Lou would want to have done 124 acres in a mixed-use pattern like this, in Wichita-Sedgwick County, that would certainly be done by what we call a planned unit development, or a PUD, which is a customized zoning district. You create, you pick off, throughout the zoning code, you pick up what uses you want, what development standards you want to modify, and you prepare a PUD drawing that is basically its own custom, unique zoning district. And we do not have that. And maybe to put a finer point on your question, the general commercial zoning district, the reason that it hasn't been utilized, except for the NIR complex, is that it requires a minimum of 100 acres to develop. So you can apply this GC zoning on an individual three, two and a half acre, three acre lot.
Thank you.
Okay. Charles?
Charles. I'm going to do Charles and then Charlie and then working on.
The developer made a statement that there would be no traffic going down number, road number 93, and limited or no truck traffic on Broadway, that it would basically all be going down that frontage road. Is that correct? Okay, so a lot of the complaints have been about the increased traffic from the commercial section being on Broadway and being on 93rd, which is not, not the plan at this time. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Charlie.
Real quick, Lou, I'm sorry, it's not the plan at this time, but could that change?
I don't feel so.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, as far as the frontage road you're talking about from 85th North to 93rd, where would that run from Saddlebrook?
From the Saddlebrook, it's a length of distance between the property line of Saddlebrook and the. So as right now, you know, you got your Saddlebrook, and then we have, we have the Hartman, and then we're going to bring Hartman kind of around, and then the width between the housing of Saddlebrook, the east side of the housing to the highway, we're going to put a road in the middle.
Okay.
Instead of putting the road all the way to the end or against it.
Okay.
That's the, that's what we, our proposed plan is.
And I just want to say, like, in order for 93rd to get improved enough for semi trucks to go through it, it has to come through this council.
Sure.
Because they're not going through it tonight or tomorrow.
Right.
Many of us have been out there, and you know what that looks like. Okay. All right. So we've had considerable discussion with the applicant, with the folks that submitted a petition, who are here tonight and signed up, also with the zoning administrator. We're at a point where it's time to vote on this. Suggested motion would be approve the zoning change as presented, to deny the zoning change with findings, to approve the zone change with modifications and/or additional conditions, which would be as we listed about, for instance, a salvage yard, or request additional information and return to the Planning Commission. Charlie.
I make a motion to deny the zone change with the findings I presented earlier.
Do I have a second? George Glover?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear, but you need to make findings if you're going to make a motion to deny.
The findings that I presented earlier.
All right.
Yeah, I'd stated that.
Just make sure the clerk has that on the record of what he stated. Okay, you got it on the recorder. Okay, okay, very good. And this is a roll call vote.
If it's denied, it's only a two-thirds, is that correct? It's a two-thirds supermajority to deny. To deny. It's a three-quarters?
Two-thirds to deny.
I'm sorry. Two-thirds supermajority to overrule the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, a three-quarters supermajority to approve it, to override the protest petition.
What does that mean? Just a rare majority doesn't, doesn't get it.
Mayor and council, both those votes are in the statute of votes of the governing body, so that's the council plus the mayor. So this would be, requires six votes.
John Lynn Hare?
Nay.
Charlie Davidson?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Saucetta?
No.
Charles Swinkie?
Nay.
Terry Osborne?
Aye.
Troy Hill?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Nay.
Jim Schrader?
Nay.
So vote is five-four. That's what you got? Okay. All right. Ben?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zone change with modifications, as mentioned, that would exclude any sort of auto salvage, auto storage, anything like that that was in there. Could you please just list those again so I can be very clear on what we're excluding?
We would be excluding research services or testing, storage outdoor, vehicle storage yards, welding or machine shops, and that's it.
So I would ask for the exceptions to be the second and third, which would be outdoor storage and auto outdoor storage.
Everything?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, Ben, motion. I have Jim lead up.
I'd second.
Motion by Ben, second by Jim.
John Lynn Hare?
Aye.
Charlie Davidson?
Nay.
George Glover?
Nay.
Ben Saucetta?
Aye.
Charles Swinkie?
Aye.
Terry Osborne? Troy Hill? Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-two. If I have that right. Okay, on to item seven. Consider ordinance amending Section 14-202 of the municipal code relating to speed limits within the city.
Mayor and council, at the present time, 101st Street North within the city limits is not covered by our speed limit ordinance, and so this ordinance amends Section 14-202 to establish the speed limit along 101st Street from the east city limits to the west city limits at 55 miles per hour. That's an appropriate speed limit because on both ends in the county, the speed limit is 55. So that would be consistent kind of across the county and through the north part of our city. Would recommend that the council adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Brandy?
I move to approve ordinance number 1194-2024 and ordinance amending the Section 14-202 of the municipal code of the city of Park City relating to maximum speed limits and repealing the original ordinance 1158-2023.
Charlie?
Second.
Discussion, motion by Brandy, seconded by Charlie, oh, and I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote.
Charlie Davidson?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Aye.
Charles Swinkie?
Aye.
Terry Osborne?
Aye.
Troy Hill?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes eight-zero. We're on to item eight. I would entertain a motion to recess and convene as the land bank. Ben?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to recess and adjourn as, or recess, yeah, and then not adjourn, come to order as the land bank. There we go.
Thank you, Terry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes eight-zero. Okay. We are the land bank. All right. Item on our agenda. Discuss and consider approving real estate purchase contract between Matthew Henry and the land bank for 29.02 acres, generally located south of 69th Street and east of Interstate 135 and here in Park City. And for council members that weren't here, this is a previous agreement that we had several years ago that was held up in litigation and has since been cleared. Sean, if you have anything to add?
No, sir.
This is property that joins the McLean Park, just between the interstate and then our road that exits the park to the north on 69th Street.
Ben?
Yeah, I'm excited that we got this through. I think there's a pretty good explanation concerning back when we had originally made the, or discussed this and approved the idea of this. If you notice today, you know, with the announcement of Champ Town and all this going on there, there's a lot of conversation regarding the needs of our city. I've had a fun time on social media today. Probably too much fun, but I think that going through and looking back at making this acquisition is smart, especially as we talk about further discussions on pool, on park expansion renovations and things like this, so adding this land back in, not saying that this is the spot where the pool's going, I'm just simply stating that having more accessible, having more land with more options provides the resources necessary. So I'd move to authorize, or to prove and authorize the chairperson to execute the real estate purchase contract with Matthew Henry in the amount of $150,000 for 29.02 acres, generally located south of East 69th Street North and Interstate 135, Park City, Kansas.
Thank you, Ben. Brandy?
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, motion by Ben, seconded by Brandy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Entertain a motion to adjourn now. Jim?
I move that we adjourn.
Terry?
Second.
By Jim, seconded by Terry, to adjourn as the land bank and reconvene as council. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero. We're back. Okay, now we're on to governing body reports. Start with Charlie.
Appreciate the conversations tonight. I think when I ran to be an elected official, I said I'd be a mouthpiece for my constituents, and I'm going to continue to do that.
Very good. Good input. Thank you. George?
Good conversation tonight. Our fishing derby, annual fishing derby, on a lighter note, is this Saturday, it's at Point Pond on North Grove Street, like all the folks that come out to that. For those that are volunteering, we'll set up about 7:00. We'll do a registration at 8:15. We'd like everyone to come out. We have a number of new sponsors this year, so it's going to be real exciting. Hope everybody can come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, just a couple things here. Happy Father's Day, that's this coming Sunday, and so to all you out there on that. The second thing I wanted to mention was concerning, again, we had the item, we've had a lot of discussion tonight on a couple of different items, and I would love to see us get to where we do utilize our bid option more. It's not a lack of trust in staff, that's not it at all, but in order to make the best opinion, best decisions, I think, that being presented with options when we're talking large amounts is something that we need to look at there. So I understand it's a plan or a policy, so, or guidance, however you want to phrase it, but I think utilizing that guidance would be much more beneficial than just listing it, saying we have a policy. Obviously, that can carry over to the plan that we discussed just a moment ago, but I think those are important for us when we're looking on there. Secondly, or thirdly, I'm excited about Friday, Champ Town's announcement obviously came out, so a lot of great things happening in Park City.
Thank you, Ben. Charles?
That Champ Town thing is, is going to really impress people. The pictures that they had on television tonight, I think ASCN and KWCH both did stories on it, and right in the middle of this thing is this big Ferris wheel, and, which is basically going to be a blinking neon for Park City as people drive by. And so I'm really excited about that, and, and I, I do, Charlie, you had some really good things, you know, and I like, like your attitude, you know, you're supporting your constituency, and I like to think that I'm here to do that also, but I'm also here to, you know, for the betterment of the whole community, you know, so it's, it's a tough, it's a tough back and forth, you know, and it makes some of these decisions pretty hard, but we got through it, and I think we have a better, a better thing because of what Ben did, and.
That doesn't get said often.
Nobody says that.
Doesn't get said often, but thank you, Ben. Anyway, that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Terry.
I too would just like to thank those that came out tonight. You know, I, I think, you know, many times we sat here, just us and a few people, and it's, it's good to see the, the community come out and, and speak, and I appreciate the comments.
Yeah, I just echo what Terry said. I think hopefully with the changes, we, not everybody got what they wanted, but hopefully this will kind of help move things in the right direction. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Brandy.
Ditto, and George, I won't be able to make your fishing derby, but I wish you luck and hope you do well.
Thank you.
Jim?
Nothing to add tonight.
Okay. Very good. I just wanted to say, I mean, these, I'll say annexations hearings, which we haven't done one in a long time, but the zoning change hearings obviously get very emotional with people bringing in, because you're talking about property rights and people sprawling into other people's area or areas of influence. They're among the hardest decisions and things that we have to weigh. The thing we always have to remember is, A, the law requires us to make decisions on certain factors, and also still balance the folks that put us here. Sometimes it's a pretty raw deal that we get, but that's the way it works. But I will say one thing that I will speak up against, and one of the speakers tonight made some pretty hard accusations against volunteers that serve on our, our board of not being honest and making less than truthful decisions and stuff behind the, behind the closed doors, and I've never seen that happen. And I, I would say that we have among the best volunteers that any community could offer, and to sit up and say things like that, it's very hard for me to not cut, cut somebody like that off and send them packing because I strongly disagree, and again, I encourage that if any of us hear something like that in public, that we stand up because these folks give up time with their families, some of them time at work, to come in and put this extra work in for us. So I thank them for all of that. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Ben?
So moved.
Troy?
Second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Troy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hey, one other thing, and I'm the worst at this, but as Ms. Pippersmith mentioned tonight, let's try to do better at leaning into our mics, and again, I'm the worst of it all. I've been told that numerous times, and I'm still terrible at it, but.
Lean back.
Because I have a, I've had a lot.